This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, I am the Honorable Mayor Andrew Dawson to hereby call it to order. This meeting is Delia City Council on the sixteenth day of October. It's part of the 2023-2024 session. Let us proceed with purpose and dedication to the values that guide our great city. This meeting is now called to order. First item we have on the agenda is prayer followed by pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor.
Would you stand as able and join me in our invocation? Your Lord and Father, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Delia City Council, mayor, administrator, staff, and members meet to hear about and discuss important matters that affect us all and for the betterment of this community make those decisions. We certainly appreciate and pray for their success, and we are grateful for the service of our city people. We ask your protection for all of our city, county, first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, CMTs, hospital staffs, all who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic for which so many thousands have fought and died, decreed and preserved for these 247 years. Please bless and protect all military and civilians serving our country today here and throughout the world, protecting our way of life, keeping us safe from threats from without, and more sadly, threats from within. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, and all those we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Here.
Oldham.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
List. Here. All right. First item we have on the agenda is the approval of the previous session council meeting minutes dated October 2nd, 2023. Does anyone have any amendments they need to make to the meeting minutes? Having heard done, I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Up next, we have the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission meeting minutes dated September 13th, 2023. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Now, we have the acceptance of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes dated August 2nd, 2023. Do you have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Now, we have the roll call of our standing committees. Up first is Financial Administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have two items on my report tonight. First, our Finance Director, Jessica Powell, will provide an update on major tax collection trends.
Right. So this month, we're looking at August sales and net sales. Use tax was up fiscal year-to-date, and so was sales tax, about $227,000 at 2.2% over the prior year. And if you remember, we had budgeted a 4% increase, so we are falling short of what we had budgeted by almost $200,000 where we're seeing today. The franchise taxes includes the charter settlement on streaming class action lawsuit, and that amount was $377,818. So when you look at the fiscal year-to-date of $375,000, we're just a little bit short of where we were last fiscal year in comparison. Transportation taxes, they are higher fiscal year-to-date, and that's due to gasoline tax. Gasoline taxes up fiscal year-to-date of 15.6%. We had previously seen digital sales was higher than the previous year, but that flattened fiscal year-to-date. And then property tax payments, those will come in in December and January, so we can get a good look at those then. Any questions?
Any questions for Director File, council?
Next, RIT Manager, Monty Richardson, will provide a presentation of where we are in the process of implementing assessments and strategies to address the vulnerabilities in our cybersecurity.
Good evening. It's kind of fitting, it didn't happen by plan, but this is Cybersecurity Awareness Month, so it is rather timely for what I would like to share with you this evening. For the IT department, up to this point, the department as a whole, and the computer systems and practices in particular, the growth and maturity of that system has been pretty much an organic growing or growth as our technology and city requirements and complexity have been introduced. With a small department in terms of our personnel and complexity, this type of an organization management can be acceptable up to a certain point. But as that system and as those requirements and operations become more complex, it becomes more demanding that we have a management and security practice that meets with that maturity. By using a NIST framework, or I should say, the NIST framework, National Institute of Standards and Tests, it offers us a tool to build our IT department and our management philosophy and how it interacts with you as the governing body in a meaningful and proactive way, addressing in part cybersecurity. But quite honestly, if we're addressing cybersecurity, we're also addressing hardware failures, software failures, patch management, and other things that are part of our daily life that aren't necessarily cybersecurity. The NIST framework has five core principles. And the CISA implementation groups and the NCSR annual survey are tools that complement the NIST framework and provide us a pathway to grow, manage, and maintain that system. I'm sorry, I'm trying to keep on to some notes here. The complexity, maturity, and security that I've been talking about, combined with compliance requirements that we have in finance, the police department, the fire department, the water department, the sewer department, all those things should work together because we're all trying to achieve the same end goals. The NIST framework brings all of that together, so instead of chasing four or five different rabbits down different holes, we're managing it all in one compatible framework. The NIST framework addresses these issues in a flexible manner, so that we're not roped into a cookie cutter proposition where we're trying to do the same thing as a corporate Fortune 100 company, or the federal government, or something like that. It's a framework, it's flexible, the basic premise is the same for all, but how we get there has a lot of different ways and a lot of different tools to bring to bear. We're already taking care of a lot of these things in one way or another, kind of in what we call an ad hoc situation. It's inefficient, prone to mistakes, and we do the best that we can. But we are leveraging a lot of free services that come through the state and federal departments of homeland security and some of the programs and tools that they offer. So we talked about the five principles or elements of the NIST framework. Those are to identify, protect, detect, respond, and recover. Like I said earlier, those things are meant to address or manage our cybersecurity risk, but being flexible, it addresses everything else in the IT lifecycle, as they say, that we have to deal with as an organization. No system is infallible, no system's perfect, especially in IT, what we did four or five years ago is no longer relevant at all. So we're constantly changing and addressing the current problems and risks that we encounter. Examples of the NIST framework that you saw there on that slide just a second ago, in regards to identify, that means understanding and managing our cybersecurity risk. Again, cybersecurity risk isn't just a ransomware infection. It could be a core UPS blowing up and we've lost power to our systems. How do we recover from that? If we apply a software patch and it fails and brings our systems down, how are we going to manage one, keeping the lights on and taking care of our customers, the citizens, as well as bringing those systems up on a timely basis? Whether it's ransomware or somebody tripped over a power cord, it's all the same process. Protecting, putting safeguards in place to ensure the security of our digital infrastructure. We've invested a lot of money into that infrastructure. The biggest part of it is the data entry that people have put into the vast treasure of data that we have. We need to protect those things. Some of the things that they're suggesting nowadays is to encrypt sensitive data to prevent unauthorized access, provide cyber security training to city employees, and to promote safe online practices. Like I said earlier, we're doing some of these things, especially in cybersecurity and some of the other things, putting that into a formal framework, into something where we as an organization can say, these are important things, and we're going to give them their due attention. That's what we're looking for. It's not so much the toys that we're asking about or talking about tonight, and I think you're already getting there ahead of me. We're not talking about more server space, we're not talking about new software, per se. We're addressing that with some of the cyber grants that we're getting. What I'm talking about is our management philosophy and the premise and the standards that we're going to adhere to in that process, just like the other departments that have those kinds of compliance requirements would do. Couple more of the principles in the framework are respond, and I alluded to those as well. Respond and effectively and efficiently to an incident, whatever it may be. Having those processes thought out and documented, what do we do in case of this, that, or something else? Having those things in a plan, in a process, so that we're not having to reinvent the wheel every day. That's inefficient, people don't act right when they're under stress, it's just not the best way to do business. Having that NIST framework to guide us through the process of developing those things in itself keeps us from having to reinvent the wheel and puts us in a situation so that our processes get into a good place. Recovery, it's part of the response, but recovery is a different thing of its own. Establishing timelines for restoring services so that we're not guessing or not meeting expectations. Those expectations, we're bringing things up. When can we expect to be operations running again? Takes a lot of stress out of things when we're not guessing in the middle of a crisis. So I've already talked about a lot of the benefits in the process of describing what those core principles are, that we enhance our security by having these things in place. We improve our risk management by identifying what is critical and what is less critical and what is not critical at all. And then applying the appropriate resources to those things, to have an appropriate plan in place depending on their risk. Compliance. The longer I get involved with this, I probably didn't have to worry about compliance issues until about four or five years ago, and even now, I don't know a whole lot. I trust the finance department or the police department or others to really know the nuts and bolts because they're the ones that are held responsible, but we do have to meet those compliance issues. In the NIST framework, we have that framework that addresses those compliance issues as part of that framework, instead of, like I said, chasing after different rabbit holes. We save money in the long run by being prepared, by planning to be strategic, instead of being in the moment and having to respond in the moment to things. If we can get a forward vision, if we can get ahead of the game, so to speak, by utilizing some of the structure, we save money in the long run. And a big one for me personally is community trust. We are the stewards of what the citizenry entrusts us with. I truly believe that, and this is the appropriate way to earn and maintain their trust. So in the NIST Cybersecurity Foundation, there's four levels. You start at the bottom, tier one, and you work your way up to tier four. Tier one is partial, it means they're making policy and procedure decisions on an ad hoc basis. I gotta be honest, that's where we're at. You know, it takes a lot of work and effort to really cover policy and procedure, and we just haven't had the resources to do that, so there's a lot to it. An organization moving up through those tiers goes to tier two, where they're actually aware of the risks that they have. They look at what could potentially happen and how to respond to it, and what do we have to have, and what would we really like to have when bad things happen? What kind of software do we have risks with? What's out of date? What has vulnerabilities? You know, that's risk. How about hardware? Is it getting too old? Is it going to crap out at an inopportune time? Or do we make that a planned event? There's room for both. We just have to know what we're dealing with and make cognizant decisions about how we're going to deal with those situations. Measure that risk and decide what's acceptable to shoulder and what we want to, in IT parlance, remediate. So how do we work through these NIST Cybersecurity Foundation maturity tiers? How do we climb that ladder, or the stairs, or whatever? How do we move from where we're at as an ad hoc, making decisions on the fly and putting out fires? How do we move from that to the point where we're actually planning four or five years out ahead and looking out into the future to see where we need to be? That's where the CISA maturity or implementation groups come in. CISA was started several years ago. It started as a grassroots effort amongst cybersecurity technologists and technology corporations. It was a freebie thing, everybody was working for free and all of that, so nobody had an axe to grind or a product to sell. So they started out wanting to raise cybersecurity awareness back in the Wild West days of the Internet. And since then, they've matured and they've brought on more tools. But they start off with three implementation groups, number one being the lowest, that's the basic, where everybody should at least be covering all the bases, and you move to group two and group three, depending on maturity of your situation. You measure that progress through the Nationwide Cybersecurity Review. It's a national program, it's free for us to use. In fact, it's actually required for some of the grants that we apply for, but it doesn't cost us anything, and it just gives us an ability to go through that survey that's developed around the NIST framework and see where we're at, see where we need to improve in all of those different tiers and things. And then assigns us a score, and again, we're fairly low, we're at two, which means we're doing a lot of the right things, but we just don't have the policy and procedure in place to back it up. They consider level five to be where everybody should be. Of course, people don't always hit that, and you know, it's a flexible target, but that's where they would like to have everybody. So the NCSR, just so you know, is 130 questions over the five elements of the NIST framework. It includes governance, risk management, incident management, service delivery. It's designed to be a gap analysis between where you are at and where you want to be or where you should be. Again, it's annual, and again, it's required by some of the cyber grants that we apply for, between the IT department and the police department, I know for sure, and some of the others maybe that I'm not aware of. So I told you about the CISA Center for Internet Security, CISA and their implementation. Well, one thing I wanted to point out to is, since starting out as a grassroots activity, it's developed and matured, and I'm really not sure how to say it, I'm sure Chief Word or Chief Irwin know how to say this, but now, the Multi-State Information Sharing and Analysis Center, I'm sure somebody knows how to say that acronym, but that's where we work. That's made for local governments, and their mission is simply to improve the overall cybersecurity posture, state, local, tribal, and territorial governments. There's another one for election entities that basically does the same thing. So what the CISA does is it has a Critical Securities Controls method. That's where they came up with the implementation groups. Those Critical Security Controls actually fold in with the NIST and with CGIS and with HIPAA and with PCI compliance and all those other things. And the thing about it is, is this Critical Security Control isn't just a list, it's not a thing where you just check off the boxes. To approach it correctly, you go in looking to raise the maturity of your organization, protect yourself, and use the tools that the CISA controls provide. Some of it's training, complimentary information about some of the risks and situations going on, explaining stuff, tools, vendors and services, some that we actually take now, we've got vulnerability scans now to help us identify some of the things that are hitting or that we're vulnerable to from the outside, and that's all free, and it comes from these guys. Those security controls are divided into three groups, and we've talked about those. You start at an implementation group, number one, has 56 safeguards. Security Implementation Group Two is 74 additional controls that you want to put in place. And then Group Three is another 23. Quite honestly, well, this slide will explain. The Group One, that's essential cyber hygiene, that's just stuff everybody should be doing. Have passwords, have good passwords, have different passwords for everything you use. Practice good Internet browsing. Don't download things, don't click on links in email that you're not sure about, you know, stuff like that. These are safeguards that almost any mom and pop office should be able to attain. These safeguards are meant to address off-the-shelf equipment, software, like I said, for mom and pop. Implementation Group Number Two is for organizations that have a staff like us. We've got three or four of us that all have different skills that we bring to bear. We have desktop and printer people, we have networking and bigger software people, and then people like me that try to keep all the points spinning. So we don't have anyone that's dedicated just for security. Zach over there was thinking about going into the security, and he said, yeah, okay, after you get done with your first four years, come back for another three in college. Seven years of education just to break into the cybersecurity realm. Not everybody can afford that. We certainly can't. We can't justify it. Anyway, Cybersecurity Control Group Two, we have a staff, some departments have regulatory requirements, some don't, some are big, some are small, some need a lot of attention, some don't need any, and everything else in between. It's not just one little organization. We've got stuff spread out all over the place, and we're all over the place around town. We store and process sensitive client information. We got stuff that people just shouldn't see because it's private and personal. I'm sure Bob Smith does not want his trash bills out in the public realm. Nobody else's business but his, right? A major concern is the loss of public confidence if a breach occurs. How are the people going to react if we get caught? When we get caught, honestly? We will get hit someday. We haven't yet, but we will, and we need to be prepared so that we can protect everything the best we can and recover as quickly as we can. I've already talked about Implementation Group Three. They're the big boys, they're the ones that go out and look for trouble instead of reacting to trouble. DOD, DHS, big corporations, big security companies that you read about in the news, that's those guys. So what exactly is in the implementation groups? I'm not going to bore you, and I don't expect you to read these all, but I wanted to just give you an idea of the breadth of what's involved in each of the implementation groups. Implementation Group One, maintain accurate inventory, hardware, software, your network design, what vulnerabilities you might have, stuff like that. Manage your default accounts and manage your software and hardware, delete and disable just dormant accounts after they're not needed. Designate people to have specific duties if a crisis occurs. Collect audit logs, just general housekeeping, not a big lift, but just a lot of things to do. Group Two, use active directory discovery tools. Now, we're starting to get into some things that we would call tools, something beyond just a spreadsheet or a notepad or something that you can drop in the desk drawer or something. You're actually starting to use tools, using automation. It's not a scary word. We do things now, thanks to Zach, because he's just come out of college and knows some of those neat things, that there were things that we used to either try to catch it before it needed attention, or wait till it needed that attention and flew a flag. Now, we've set up some automation to where it just takes care of itself and lets us know that it did the job. Totally took a big stress out of life. Implementation Group Two, encrypt sensitive data, document our data flows, segment our data processing, and use MFA, that's multi-factor authentication for remote network access, and even now, I hear, I talked to somebody a couple of months ago, that said that they're starting to require multi-factor authentication within the organization. You know, we try to keep all the bad stuff out, but once it gets in, how do you protect yourself inside? The MFA makes sense, just nobody wanted to go to the expense, and now they're seeing a need for it. And then, I'm not even going to bore you with Group Three evidently. How do we get to where we need to be? We don't do it by ourselves, we don't have the expertise, and quite honestly, for the kind of money that we can get this stuff delivered, why would we? I'll be bringing a proposal in a couple of three weeks. It'll outline in specific terms what we get and how much it costs, but basically, they bring in a checklist, they bring in expertise, they bring in understanding of the scope of the job. Just because you have this framework doesn't mean you have to try and shoot for the stars, right? It's flexible, and they know how to do that flexibility to stay compliant and meaningful, not just checking boxes, but making it meaningful for an organization of our type. They come in, figuratively or literally, we're still working on that, but they reach out to stakeholders. It's a fancy word for people that have a need to be involved. Administration, mayor, department heads of some of the bigger departments say, hey, tell us what your organization is about, how do you use technology? What's important to you? If a tornado comes through, what do you have to have? What kind of compliance measures do you have to abide by? I mean, they could guess, they, trust me, they know more than I do. They say, oh, police department, oh, they gotta abide by the CGIS requirements, oh, we can take care of that. Oh, fire department, they run medical calls, they probably abide by HIPAA, we can handle that. They need the engagement of us to make it a worthwhile endeavor. Through all of that, they established the scope of what we need, not just wishful thinking and picking up stuff and stars, but actually understanding our organization and helping us. They refine the assessment, they understand, they apply the risk models to what we, what kind of risks we have and how to address them. And then they actually do the assessment. They gather data, they gather the standards, they put it all together and they assess our situation. Then they bring it back to us. They do an assessment review with whoever needs to be there. Any of you would certainly be welcome to attend. They communicate that assessment and they want a lot of questions because that's not the end-all. Just presenting those results is not the end. That's just the beginning and they want questions. And they share the risk-related information. These are the kinds of problems that you have, these are the risks that you have. And then you get to decide, I get to decide, we get to decide how important those risks are. And then what do they deliver? What are we paying them for? We're paying them for an overview of our status, our situation. Then they provide us with a gap analysis. This is where you are, this is where you say you want to be, this is where the standards say you should be. How do you get there? What makes sense? What do we do first? What do we do second? What makes sense? What doesn't make sense? They answer that in the gap analysis. Then they give us a compliance report, where do we fall in meeting our compliance requirements? Then they give us a plan. How do we get there? How long does it take? What milestones? How do we measure our progress, milestones? And what I'm excited about is they help us develop policy and procedure. Instead of us having to think and worry about grammar and what's applicable and what's not applicable and how specific do we get or not get, they help us understand all that and help us craft that policy and procedure that we can live with, not some cookie cutter stuff. I've read the cookie cutter stuff and you get what you pay for. So that's what they bring to the fore. Again, I'll be bringing that up in a couple of, three weeks. Of all the things I'd like to spend my money on in the next couple of years, it's not the toys, it's not the hardware, it's not the software. I can't remember the first server I bought. Okay, that's not important. It's how we manage what we have that never changes. Yes, we tweak it as conditions change, but we have to have a management structure. We have gone way beyond when I took this job a while back and we had 75 computers and they were all in one building. We span from one end of the city to the other. We're on fiber. We'll probably be bringing in some other technology here in the next couple, three years. We have more storage than I ever, I remember floppy drives. We are so far beyond floppy drives now, I never imagined I'd buy a 16 terabyte drive, let alone 20. That's a lot. How we manage that is what's important. It's not the toys. Toys come and go. How we care for it, how we protect it, how we use it to help the citizenry. That's what everybody remembers and that's what I want to accomplish. The NCRS gives us that annual survey, that annual roadmap of where we're at and we can look back from previous surveys to see where we've been. We can look forward and hope and have a plan to reach where we want to go. That's something that we keep internally and nobody else sees, it's anonymous and you Implementation groups one and two are where we need to work on. Those are ones that are really applicable to us. We have a standard to try to meet. The professional services to develop the management framework, the policies and procedures is going to take us leaps and jumps ahead of where we're at right now. That is the one thing that is holding back our scores, our ability to show the public that we're doing what we need to do. If I go, if I stay, somebody else can easily pick up that framework and carry on with it. That's the beauty of it. It's almost, it's almost like water. It tastes good to everybody. With that, I've done all I need to do. Do we have any questions at this point?
Any questions, Council? Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
That is all, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Next, we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson, you have the floor.
The Police Department had a great plan, has a great plan for setting the vehicles and getting new vehicles, except when you can't get new vehicles. So we order them and then they don't come and then whoops, all they come. So we're faced with needing more money, essentially, 91,000 per. We have four Durangos that showed, that will either have showed up or will show up. I don't know whether they're here or not, but they're.
Three of them are here.
Three of them are here, so they're all strapped. So we need to, need an ordinance.
Okay.
Resolutions.
We have a resolution and ordinance with regards to this budget amendment. I'll call for the reading of the resolution first.
Resolution 2061, a resolution of the City Council of the Cities of Soudia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Let's get approved. Thank you. Any discussion regarding the motion?
I just want to add that Chief Wertz in our meeting did say that 70 some thousand dollars of that is going to be covered on a grant because one of these vehicles is going to be earmarked for DWI enforcement.
Very good. Anything further, Council? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, resolution passes. Thank you, Council. Next, we have an ordinance in relation to this budget amendment. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-199, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding purchase of two Dodge Durangos plus vehicle DWI enforcement equipment.
Second. Any Council discussion regarding the motion, the second, the motion? Having heard none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-199, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023-2024 regarding purchase of two Dodge Durangos plus vehicle DWI enforcement equipment.
All right, second. Any Council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance? Having heard none, roll call please.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
All in favor.
The ordinance passes. Thank you, Chairman Robinson. Next, we have Public Works, Chairman Oldham, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. We have three items tonight. The first one is the acceptance of a one permanent and two temporary sewer easements. With the sewer extension project on Oak Grove Lane, we need to obtain easements for the new sewer main along with temporary easement to allow enough room for the construction.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-200, an ordinance approving and accepting permanent and temporary easements relating to Oak Grove Lane sewer main extension.
Thank you, reading.
Any Council discussion regarding the motion, second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-200, an ordinance approving and accepting permanent and temporary easements relating to Oak Grove Lane sewer main extension.
Final passage, second.
Any Council discussion regarding the final passage of the ordinance approving and accepting these temporary and permanent easements? Having heard none, roll call please.
Cross. Foster.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
All in favor.
These next two items, I'll combine into just one description. They are for the removal of a handicap parking sign, one, the first ordinance will be the one in front of 314 South Washington and the second one will be on the north side of Maine and the west side of Kentucky. These two petitions went through the Traffic Advisory Board with no issue at all. They also, staff has also done their diligence, they're reaching out to the surrounding facilities and businesses to make sure there are no objections to the removal of these handicap spots. The first one in South Washington there was the previous senior center, seeing that it's moved, those two spots that were originally designated for handicap parking are no longer needed and the surrounding housing, they're needing just a little bit more close parking. And then the second removal of the handicap parking signs is in front of the business, they're needing to just open up some more parking spots for the customers.
Okay, so we will go ahead and take the first ordinance first that is in relation to 314 South Washington. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-201, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 9095 by removing two handicap parking spaces in front of 314 South Washington Avenue in the Cities of Soudia, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
Any Council discussion regarding the second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-201, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 9095 by removing two handicap parking spaces in front of 314 South Washington Avenue in the Cities of Soudia, Missouri.
Final passage.
Second.
Any Council discussion regarding the final passage of this ordinance, removing the stop sign, or the handicap parking spots of 314 South Washington? Having heard none, roll call please.
Foster.
Yes.
Liz.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
All in favor.
The ordinance passes. The next ordinance that Chairman Oldham introduced was in relation to the removal of the handicap parking signs at Maine and Kentucky. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-202, an ordinance repealing ordinance numbers 9198 and 9206 by removing one handicap parking space on the west side of Kentucky Avenue, north of Main Street in the Cities of Soudia, Missouri.
Thank you, reading.
Second.
Any Council discussion regarding the motion, second reading? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number 2023-202, an ordinance repealing ordinance numbers 9198 and 9206 by removing one handicap parking space on the west side of Kentucky Avenue, north of Main Street in the Cities of Soudia, Missouri.
Final passage. Second.
Any Council discussion regarding the final passage of the ordinance repealing ordinance numbers 9198 and 9206? Having heard none, roll call please.
Liz.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
August.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, thank you, Chairman Oldham. Next, we have Community Development, Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. This evening, I have four items, the first of which is the discussion of implementation of one-way streets with diagonal parking downtown. We were presented with a petition at the last meeting of September asking us to look at implementing one-way streets aimed at increasing parking availability and improving traffic flow safety. In response, we adopted a motion to direct staff to study this proposal and bring back further thoughts and discussion for consideration and I believe Mr. Shaw has more to ask.
Great, thank you much. Just to go through this, I thought the first place to start was is the petition. So I just went through and went back to the petition and pulled together the thoughts and what they actually asked for. So basically, they asked for us to come together and explore the implementation of one-way streets with diagonal parking in historic downtown Soudia as a viable solution to alleviate persistent parking issues in the area. They also said that they firmly believe adopting a well-designed one-way street system with diagonal parking could significantly improve traffic flow and increase parking capacity in downtown by efficiently utilizing available street space and reducing conflicting traffic patterns. This approach has proven successful in various cities across the nation, enhancing pedestrian safety, reducing congestion and fostering a more enjoyable experience for all. They listed out in their view, the benefits exploring this proposal include improved traffic flow, increased parking capacity, pedestrian safety and economic vitality as well as preserving the historic charm. They went on to request, formally request that we evaluate the proposal feasibility engaging in discussion with traffic experts, stakeholders and the community to assess its potential impact on our build-out downtown. As concerns citizens invested in the well-being and prosperity of Soudia, we firmly believe that exploring one-way streets with diagonal parking in historic downtown Soudia is a worthwhile endeavor that can significantly enhance the quality of life for all. We urge the City Council to prioritize this matter and initiate the necessary studies and planning to determine its feasibility and potential benefits. And they ended with just thanking you all and trust that you will have the better interest in our community and we remain ready to collaborate and support any initiatives that enhance the vibrancy of the prosperity of our cherished historic downtown Soudia. So with that in mind, I, you know, will start off with, I am not a traffic expert. But what I did do is I just took GIS and took some rough measurements based off of the GIS and used the tools that I had and took a look at it from the perspective that they put forward in the petition. And so with those rough measurements, I just looked at roughly parallel parking, the length is approximately 21.7 feet. The depth is approximately nine and a half feet, whereas angle parking is about 10.8 feet per parking spot. And that's average because it's at an angle, so you, you know, one is going to take up more than 10.8, but then when you look at the total distance of several of them put together, it takes up 10.8 per. And then it's 19 and a half feet deep. So in essence, what you have is you trade length for depth. So it's about 10 feet wider, but then 10.9 feet less in length. When you overlay that with the lane width is approximately, you know, in some areas we have less than 10 feet, some areas we have a little more than 10 feet, but approximately a 10-foot lane width in each direction. So the concept really becomes if you remove one lane of traffic, allows you to change one side of the parking from parallel to angle, which essentially doubles the number of parking spaces possible on that side of the street. For example, I based a lot of my measurements off of looking at Fifth Street between Ohio and Lamine. And you can see there in the picture, point here, we already have this angle parking, so that was what I did my measurements off of. And then the parallel parking that's existing on this side of the street is what I did my measurements off of. So if you see, right now, we've got two-way traffic and each two-way traffic has 10-foot lanes. If you make it one way only, then you can take essentially this lane that's currently for eastbound traffic, you can extend that out into that lane of traffic and make it angle parking. So currently, there's 33 parking spaces there. If you do it this way, it would, just again, by my rough math and rough look, create about 44 parking spaces, which is about a third or increasing 11 more over what's currently there. So if I can get my mouse back. There it is. If you continue on with that same concept, I'm going just a little bit further west to the next block between Osage and Ohio. If you again make the southbound lane, or south side of the road, angle parking, keep the north side of the road as parallel parking and then get a one-way street, then your current parking of 17 becomes potential parking. then your current parking of seventeen becomes potential parking of twenty-seven, so you increase by ten. And I'll tell you that I didn't draw all of that out for every street, but what I did was is I went through and again took the measurements of the street and put together this spreadsheet, if you will, just again investigating the concept, not saying this is what we should do. I'm just saying what's the potential. So if you'll see that the Fifth Street, Ohio to Lamine that we just talked about, it's currently two lanes of traffic. It's fifty feet wide curb-to-curb approximately again. Lane width is about ten and a half feet per lane. You have north parking of twenty-two, the south parking of eleven. If you change that to one lane of traffic, westbound only, you still have your curb width and then lane width becomes eleven feet. And you can get twenty-two spaces or continue to have twenty-two spaces on the north side. And for the south side, you can double that to bring up twenty-two for eleven potential change. You can see on down through here, the next block, Osage to Ohio, ten. The next block, Kentucky to Osage, increases by seven. When you look at Lamine to Massachusetts, the curb-to-curb width is only thirty. And right now, we have two lanes of traffic and we have no parking on the north side and ten point three lane width and nine parking spots on the south. So if you made that one way again, you can add parking on the north side to get eight parking spots on the north side. Fourth Street, I looked at it, going the opposite direction, going east. And you can add eleven spots on Ohio to Lamine, another ten spots, Osage to Ohio, and another ten spots, Kentucky to Osage. I also looked at Second Street, again, Second Street, this is one where the curb-to-curb width is only thirty-four feet. It is currently two-way traffic. And if you had people parking on both sides, your lane width is only seven and a half feet, which you can't pass cars in seven and a half feet.
Does that create a safety issue for getting the safety fire apparatus to that?
Absolutely. If there's cars parked on both sides of the street, you effectively only have one-way traffic. If you were trying to go down that with cars parked on both sides of the street with fire apparatus and you met a car coming at you, somebody's got to move, you can't get through there. So if you created the one lane only on east traffic, you fix that, your one lane then becomes fourteen and a half feet. You don't increase a whole lot of, you only increase by five, but you get twenty-four parking spaces on the north side. You still have zero on the south side. And you, but again, you fixed your lane width.
That enhances on the count, and there are parking lots there on the corner of Ohio and Second Street?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that would take, could take care of the south side parking then. If you turn right off Ohio on the Second Street.
Yes.
Then you'd have that parking lot right there on the right-hand side, and that goes all the way to Lamine.
Mm-hmm.
That's the two parking lots.
Yes.
So you really wouldn't have any reason to have parking on the south side of Second Street.
Yes.
Between Ohio and Lamine.
Yeah, because you had that parking lot. Mm-hmm. Yeah, there is additional parking in the parking lot.
But doing it this way, you eliminate a choke point too.
Right, right, I see that, and I'm seeing all this.
See, Osage to Ohio, you can add nine spots, still have sufficient lane width. Second Street, Kentucky to Osage is already one-way and it's east only, so it doesn't change anything there. And then again, Lamine to Massachusetts, we have again the same problem that if you have cars parking on both sides, your lane width is only seven and a half each direction, which won't work. But so you can change that to where it fixes the lane width and leaves the parking the same by making it one-way. Sixth Street, I also looked at it, we again, Ohio to Lamine would increase ten, Osage to Ohio, seven. And we have again the same problem, where we only have thirty-one feet curb-to-curb on Kentucky to Osage and also Lamine to Massachusetts. So in both of those cases, we're again fixing that problem of the choke point, but it only increases two parking spots on each block. I also looked at Third Street, and if you did Third Street, and here's the numbers, it would create ten, seven, eight, and eleven. However, so it's a total of thirty-six parking spaces. However, as I looked at it, Third Street is more of a, what I would consider an arterial road where people are going both directions, going through the city, not just getting around downtown. They're going through downtown on it. So I would not recommend it, so therefore, in these totals that are the summary that I'll bring up here in a little bit, I did not include those totals in my analysis. I also looked at Seventh Street, however, Seventh Street has the same problems that we talked about as far as width, curb-to-curb. And so it would not lend itself to this concept very well. And again, we could do the same thing where you could create one-way and alleviate that lane width where you're not meeting cars, with cars parked on both sides. But it wouldn't affect the traffic so far, the number of spaces, so I did not include it in this analogy. I also looked at Main Street, and Main Street currently has three lanes with, you know, traffic both going in both directions with also a center-left turn lane. As I looked at it, it's sixty feet wide curb-to-curb. So you could still maintain the three lanes of parking and change one side to angled parking and still retain a ten and a half foot lane distance each direction as well as the center of the lane. So in total, if I went from, let's see, I went from Massachusetts to Kentucky, you would, or actually Monata. Massachusetts to Monata, you could add forty-nine spaces and not affect the traffic flow at all there.
So we're not changing, we're going to change in Main Street to a one-way street? You keep the east and westbound lanes going the same way, center lane.
Correct.
Turn lane, and then just all you're doing is adding the angle parking.
Yeah, changing parallel to angle on the south side of the road. Now again, I'm not, you know, these are in fact numbers, but that's what it looks like the potential is to me. So in summary, to look at it in picture, here is what we have currently. And you can see the arrows that put in there, I put them in white, maybe I should have chosen different colors so they'd stand out better. But Main Street has two-way traffic east, our Second Street has one way for part of it, but then two-way for part of it. Third Street, two-way, Fourth Street, and so you get down here by the jail and the sheriff's office where it ends, dead end. And then two-way traffic here on Fifth Street and Sixth Street and Seventh Street. If you increase Second Street east only, so I changed where they're in, in a gold color here is where the differences are. So Second Street would be one-way for these three blocks in addition to what is already one-way. Third Street I left alone, Fourth Street, I changed three blocks to one-way, you go on eastbound. Fifth Street, I changed four blocks to west only. Sixth Street to four blocks that are east only. So in total, and again, these are just my rough numbers, we've estimated adding fourteen parking spots on Second Street, thirty-one on Fourth, thirty-six on Fifth, twenty-one on Sixth, and forty-nine on Main Street. So by making those changes alone, you would add an estimated one hundred and fifty-one parking spaces. So I also just did my count, again, you look at the on-street parking in total, if you include the north and south streets, like, you know, Osage, Ohio, Lamine, and Kentucky, you would have eight hundred and sixty-one total parking spaces. If you made those changes, you would add the one hundred and fifty-one to take it up to ten thousand, or one thousand and twelve, ten thousand. I also looked and just counted the parking lots, the public parking lots, we have four hundred and seven parking spots. Again, this was just my rough count from looking at GIS. And so that brings it to total downtown parking of one thousand two hundred and sixty-eight spaces. And with the changes discussed, it would be fourteen, or one thousand four hundred and nineteen. I also, just for my own edification, I thought it was interesting, so I put it on the slide for you. Is if you just look for comparison's sake, if you take what would be what a normal city block is and you measure that from the front door of Walmart, there's about four hundred parking spaces within one block of Walmart's front door. If you looked at, and again, I just did this from an aerial review of looking at what it would look like and just did the measurements, just again, rough measurements. If you parked essentially two hundred and sixty feet away from Walmart's front door, walked through Walmart, walked across it, and then walked back up and back out to your car, you would have traveled about seventeen hundred and twelve feet, which is essentially the equivalent of walking from Sixth Street to Main Street, which would be the equivalent of parking a block away from your first stop downtown, making four stops a block apart, and then back to your car. In other words, walking six blocks. You could stop at four places a block apart and be equivalent to walking through Walmart. Again, I don't know if that makes any difference, I just thought it was interesting. So from my perspective, what's next? You know, I couldn't stress enough, this is a very simplistic look at just the potential. I just was trying to comply with what they put the guess put in the petition as to far as, you know, what the potential would look like. We do have, we've asked a traffic engineer to take a look at this and vet it out and put their expertise into it and see if what I looked at is completely off-base or if it's anywhere close. So at this point, I would suggest that we just turn it over to council, have an open discussion. We have some good discussion during the community development council committee meeting, so I'll set up and let you all talk.
With these numbers that you've given us, have, are did you take into consideration making some of those parking spaces handicapped?
It's in my mind, Tina. That's it all.
Actually, yes, because the way I looked at it is you could make the one on each corner a handicap space, and it would not take up any more room, so you'd have the same number of spaces. You also, in your parallel, you could make those van accessible and again, not take up any more space because you're just using the sidewalk for your van accessible. So again, I'm not, I'm not an expert by any stretch, but that's the way it appeared to me. So I thought about it, I don't know if I addressed it.
Okay.
I know that is a big complaint that we get, that there's not enough handicap parking downtown. And hair salons and a few other places especially have a lot of elderly ladies that struggle to get their, they get their hair set weekly and they can't get into their appointments a lot. So I think that would be a great benefit if we could get more handicap parking downtown.
It makes it easier too with adding these additional spots to go in, adding, making it easier.
And don't hang the messenger here because I've heard, well, that'd be hard to enforce. But I'd also like to see some cooperation from the downtown businesses in forcing their employees to park in the parking lots instead of in front of their businesses. I mean, ninety percent of the parking spots are taken up by employees parking in front of the businesses that they want people to shop at. So if those people could park in the parking lot and walk to their job, you know, I mean, it just makes sense to me to have that as a stipulation or something to, you know, it's going to take everybody to work together to make this work.
Yeah, we do have those conversations with the downtown business owners and, you know, the vast majority of them get it and they understand that and supportive of it. We also, I will add another piece to that, and that's we're getting a lot of residents downtown that we didn't have before. And, you know, of course, they're, you know, rightfully so, they're entitled to those parking spaces just like everybody else, but they are taking up more of the on-street parking. And, but again, it's, the hope is to add more parking spaces to accommodate that. We have also had the discussion about enforcing the two-hour parking. And I tell you, you know, I don't have a good answer to that. We can't hire enough officers to do what we're trying to take care of on, you know, the more serious crimes. So I, you know, being able to sit here today and say that I think we can hire a parking attendant and enforce the two-hour parking, I just, I just don't see that happening any time soon. Even if we allocated the money, I just don't think we could find them.
Or the fifteen-minute parking, or there's several of those things. What costs do you see associated with this?
With this? What I've seen here, or what I've done, but again, you know, we need to vet it out, it's paying. I mean, I haven't done any, I haven't done any infrastructure.
And I mean, I haven't changed any width of the roads, I haven't turned toward any sidewalks or.
Fourth Street, Fourth Street from Ohio to Lamine, all that's kind of diagonal parking there in front of the Motte Hotel anyway. And you've got the arrows going in the right directions to fix all that, so.
Yeah, and that's why I made it eastbound and Fifth Street westbound.
They pell out park on the north side, but they're all angled parked on the south side now.
Yeah, you're talking right there.
Mm-hmm. Basically, except for Ohio, diagonal parking is around the square.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and somebody said to me, well, you know, they were against us making it one-way down there. And I said, well, you gotta understand, and she, well, you gotta understand that they're comparing it to Marshall. Marshall's streets are wider. And I said, look, it'll be handled, and I think you've handled it pretty well. So, you know, it's just.
Well, now that you brought up Ohio and North Streets, that is one thing that I thought about, but I did not address. I didn't take the time to do it, is you could also look at the North-South Streets and you could apply the same concept and increase the number of parking.
You've got to be able to get there, you know, that's the thing. I live, I live south of downtown, okay, I got to be able to get there. And I don't want to have to go east or west on fifty highways to find my one-way. and I don't wanna have to go east or west on Fifty Highway to find my one-way street to get downtown. So, you know, I think Ohio would be best, just leave it alone. You know, that would be the main artery to get to your one-way stuff.
Yeah, Ohio, I would advocate that Ohio should be two-way, but that doesn't mean that you couldn't make Osage and Lamine one-way, alternating directions. Just a thought, I think.
Yeah, I'd have it, except you could, you'd have to talk to the Sheriff's Department because like, I know when Kentucky out here is one-way, you know, they, you know, there was a, sometimes a inconvenience for the officers, they had to go out and go down and then go back.
Maybe that's something that that traffic engineer will take a look at and see. And the deer are out close, so.
It's the Sheriff's Department, so that's one reason why maybe.
And then also, yeah, talking with the stakeholders and the people that live down there, doing business down there, and...
Can you go back to what the width of some of the streets would be? Some of them were going to eleven feet wide, is that correct?
The lane, yes.
The lane?
Yeah.
Correct me, our wrong chief, your, that is like an eastern feet wide. When the Al River is set out, when the Al River is set out. That might cause an issue.
But you don't drive down the street with Al River out, do you?
No, but you had to come down to Ohio with a smarter, because you couldn't send the Al River out to be bleeding fields and stuff like that. If anyone were one of the time to say it.
Yeah, some of those streets now...
Are very tight, you can't set a black car up anymore.
This is all good data, this is conceptualization, and this is where we're at. But I guess my, we don't have, we really haven't considered how the parking lots provide things. We haven't gotten stakeholder information. We need to get information from police, fire, the sheriff, from the ambulance districts. We need to get traffic data, we need to talk, maybe to open doors. We really don't even have an idea about cost and revenue, this is G R A. We can do that, but for me, and we haven't talked about Mill Avenue, and the fact that we want to create a truck route that comes down Third Street, goes around Mill Avenue, and goes down Ohio. This is a major undertaking, and I'm just on the fence until, you know, we have, you know, I'm the side, I believe we have Traffic Advisory Group that can help us gathering this data. I think it's a pretty long process, but this is a good start, this is conceptualization, but we don't have any traffic, you know, we do need to get that engineer involved, we do need a set of drawings, and this is like building a building. You know, we need an architect, so to speak, or we need an engineer. And I think we've got the tools to get all the data and move down that process to refine it till we actually get a construction set of drawings, so to speak. But I would, I think we need to begin that process. I mean, we're talking about one hundred and fifty-one spaces, how much is, and I think it's gonna cost a lot more than you realize it's gonna cost if you include all the planning in the process and all the data that you have to collect. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do it, but I'd kinda like to know how much it's gonna cost per space, so to speak. And then I'd like to know from the stakeholders downtown how much revenue that's gonna, they think that's gonna generate, because it comes down to that analysis for us. It's called revenue. Not necessarily just dollar for dollar twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-twenty-four. I mean, if we've got a fairly high cost and a low revenue to begin with, but we think it gives us a lot of growth potential, that's one thing. But we're in the conceptualization phase, and I'd remind everybody of that, and ask that we, we don't have to get in a big hurry, I don't think. And when we do, it must do it right.
So I might ask, does the council have any objections to just developing this concept further?
Nope. Well, no, I don't. And I think you as the mayor guide us through that process some way, but... With city staff, with councils and advisory boards, and we can, I think that's a good idea, sir.
All right. We'll keep developing it and see where this thing takes us. Great.
Okay. Moving on to the second item this evening, rezoning application, T I B ten twelve North Ohio, a R one single-family residential to C three commercial. A petition was received from the owners of the property at ten twelve North Ohio to rezone the property from R one single-family residential to C three commercial. Hearing was held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the petition. The property consists of nine point six-three acres and is currently vacant. Property to the north is zoned partially commercial and partially residential. Properties to the east and west are both zoned industrial. The property immediately to the south is vacant and zoned residential, with the next property to the south of it being zoned and used as industrial. After the hearing, staff recommended and P and Z concurred that the application should be approved since this use would be consistent with surrounding uses and the plan development of the area as identified in the conference of plan.
All right. With that, we'll go ahead and call for the reading of the ordinance granting a zoning change.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh three. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R one single-family residential to C three commercial on certain property located at ten twelve North Ohio Avenue in the city of Soudaya, Missouri, in accordance with chapter sixty-four of the city code of the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading. Any council discussion regarding the final passage of the ordinance granting a zoning change to ten twelve North Ohio Avenue? Have you heard none, roll call please? Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor.
All right, the third item for the season is an annexation of Midwest Landing LLC. A petition was received earlier for annexation of property owned by Midwest Landing LLC along Cambridge Drive. A public hearing was held based on that petition, and then later, an ordinance was adopted to complete the annexation. However, it was later discovered that the legal description for the property was changed. Therefore, for clarity and transparency, legal counsel recommends repeating a process with the updated legal description. Another hearing was conducted, the last meeting to hear from any interested parties on the appropriateness of the annexation. No comments were made during that hearing. Now that the required waiting period of fourteen days after the hearing has expired, council can now consider adoption of an ordinance to conclude the annexation, which staff recommends as approval.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance approving the annexation of the unincorporated area owned by Midwest Landing LLC.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh four. An ordinance of the city of Soudaya, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Midwest Landing LLC into the city of Soudaya, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Second reading.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion to, for the second reading? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh four. An ordinance of the city of Soudaya, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Midwest Landing LLC into the city of Soudaya, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage, second. Any council discussion regarding the motion to, for the second reading? Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh four. An ordinance of the city of Soudaya, Missouri approving and annexing an unincorporated area owned by Midwest Landing LLC into the city of Soudaya, Missouri adjacent and contiguous to existing corporate limits of said city.
Final passage, second. Any council discussion regarding the final passage? Have you heard none, roll call please? Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor. Ordinance passes.
The fourth item that I have for the season is a rezoning application for Les Maisons LLC, six hundred South Missouri, R one single-family residential to R three multifamily residential. A petition was received from the owners of the property at six hundred South Missouri to rezone the property from R one single-family residential to R three multifamily residential. A hearing was held in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to review the petition. The property is currently used for a fourplex that was built in nineteen seventy-one. Subsequently, in nineteen eighty-three, council made a conscious decision to rezone the area to R one single-family residential. This was in response to concerns raised over several historic single-family homes being converted to multifamily structures. Therefore, the zoning restriction was intended to stop further conversions and over time restore the neighborhood to single-family structures. The property in question, along with others in the area, constitutes a legal non-conforming use. Since it existed as multifamily before the zoning change, it essentially is allowed to continue their use unless and until it no longer is being used in that way. If the structure was destroyed for some reason, it could only be built back as a single-family residence. During the hearing, one individual that also owns property in this area that is similar in its legal non-conforming use spoke in favor of the rezoning. However, there were several individuals either speaking at the hearing or submitting letters for the record in strong opposition of the rezoning application. After the hearing, staff recommended and P and Z concurred that the application should be denied since it would be in direct contradiction to the purpose and intent of the zoning action taken in nineteen eighty-three. And as expressed at the hearing, many of the residents took that into consideration when investing their surrounding, and investing in their surrounding properties. Likewise, the zoning revision would not be consistent with the plan development and restoration for the area as identified in the conference of plan.
All right. Council has a notice party to this matter of vested interest, so I need to recuse myself from presiding over, discussing, or voting on this matter. I'll turn in a letter to the clerk to be put into the record that reflects that. So for this adjourned item, I will turn it over to Mayor Pro Tim Foster.
Thank you. I would like to call for the reading of the ordinance, please.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh five. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R one single-family residential to R three multifamily residential on certain property located at six hundred South Missouri in the city of Soudaya, Missouri, in accordance with chapter sixty-four of the city code of the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh-huh. Is there any discussion?
Bill number, bill number two thousand twenty-three, two oh five. An ordinance granting a change in zoning classification from R one single-family residential to R three multifamily residential on certain property located six hundred South Missouri in the city of Soudaya, Missouri, in accordance with chapter sixty-four of the city code of the city of Soudaya, Missouri.
Final passage, second.
Roll call please.
Marshall?
No.
Bogus?
No.
Taylor?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Bliss?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
No.
Zero, yes, eight, no.
Thank you. And that is all that I have for the season.
All right, thank you, Chairman Foster. Another business, we have no appointments. We do have some liquor licenses, call for the reading of the liquor license.
We have two new and two renewals. Have new for Annalisa Lemus doing businesses, A L and M V Lemus Enterprises LLC at five twenty South Ohio for a picnic license for the Ducks Unlimited Banquet at the Missouri State Fairgrounds Ag Building on October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And Casey Barnes doing businesses, Lamb, three oh one East Maine, Coal Camp, Missouri, special event license for Witch's Night Out in downtown Soudaya on October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And then two renewals, Crystal Sims doing business of the Wood Express Number five seventy at seven oh three East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales. And Kelly Ward's Black doing business of State Fair Spirits LLC at fourteen nineteen South Limit for packaged liquor, Sunday sales, and taste testing.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
Any council discussion, you're reading the motion approved. Have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Now, any miscellaneous items for the city council, city administrator? Anybody got it?
Next month, Child State will be hosting an annual dessert auction. So I was told tonight that they're gonna be reaching out to those who have donated in the past and would like to donate a pie or bread. Would like to donate, or at the Ford, just to get the child things, they're gonna go.
On October the twenty-fifth, the City of Soudaya and Historical Society, Preservation, I'm sorry, we will be unveiling a new plaque that will show you where the George R. Smith College was. There will be, the plaque will give you information about that college, how, what it was all about. This is a big thing as far as I'm concerned, and many on the north side of town. We've always talked about the George R. Smith College, but they always said, "Well, where is it?" So now you're gonna know where it's at, because you'll be able to pull in and read the plaque and the information. And that unveiling is, again, it's gonna be on October the twenty-fifth at three P M on East Pettis Street. Also, I don't know if I may, some of my constituents that are here from the north side, tonight you heard us doing an approval of a rezoning on North Ohio, that's North Church. Yes, for church.
You got anything else?
Yeah, September twenty-sixth is, uh, mine just went blank. Do you laugh down there?
He was messing with me.
Constopper, Constopper spaghetti dinner. I had some tickets, I've only got two left, but they're eight dollars, start at five o'clock. If you've got a ticket, make sure you get there, because it does go fast.
And you said September twenty-sixth, I think you meant October?
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth, okay.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to say that that key presentation of the gentleman at, where House Tire was, was pretty special. It was pretty awesome, you know. And then, and then also, the homecoming was, was great, yeah. Good crowd.
Good parade, it's fun. Game wasn't no good, though.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna mention that.
Bring in, I think.
Like, swing and boom, Bob.
If you want to know the addition of the...
Maybe Kentucky, I didn't, I forgot to check, wow, that's weird.
I'm sorry. I was gonna say, the addition of the street barriers that we purchased last year.
Oh, the pedestrian barriers.
Thank you. Huge difference from the homecoming parade last year.
Yeah, I was able to run smoothly, and you didn't have any hangups?
Yeah, it was very good. We received several comments right back.
The Eagles lost.
Yeah.
The Eagles lost.
Ah. What is the competition?
That is possible, that's good.
Okay, that's all out there. Bob, no, it's, now watch, Tina. If I keep talking, watch her, she's gonna give me a stink eye, she made me laugh. So I think we'll move on.
I only do that to you.
We have fun.
All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion. Anybody from the audience, this is the good and welfare portion of the meeting. If anybody has anything that they'd like to address council on, go ahead and step to the microphone. You have three minutes, and state your name and your address. Twenty dollars.
When they dance, one nine eight one three, tanglemunk. I would like to first apologize for the non-lasagna dinner. There was a scheduling conflict at the Parks Department, as well as we cannot do fundraising while the United Way is going on, because we are under bad umbrella. So next month, second Sunday, we will be doing it again. I am going to be going to Jet City tomorrow for the next few days. Our Silverhead Legislative Session is going on. We've got about twenty-three different bills that we're trying to present to the different representatives and senators, and it is always concerning our sixty and older group. Obviously, one of our main considerations is gonna be funding. Pettis County is five thousand-plus meals every month we are doing at the center. And obviously, not all of them are paid. But if we can get some tax dollars, it would also help. We also wanna work on possibly restoring the M O B prescription, the Missouri prescription for the Medicaid vote. Several... Several different items, but I will give you a report when I come back, um, because we are definitely always looking to take care of our aging community, so. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, have you heard none, we'll go ahead and, uh, I will entertain a motion to move the closed-door meeting.
Motion to close our session for legal advice real estate negotiating, negotiations with employee groups and negotiated contracts.
Second.
Any council discussion regarding the motion? Have you heard none, roll call please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right, I'll now entertain a, uh, motion of second during the meeting.
So a little.
Second.
The council's question, have you heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?